Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the very popular religious saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. So, we'll start with a roll call. Please note for the record that we have two absences this evening, Mr. Alexander and Mr. Parker. Everybody else is here. And we'd like to announce that we had an executive session prior to this meeting for personnel, discussion about personnel. So, now we come to the time of public comment. I have one here, and that's from, I'm going to assume, Ms. Krishner.
Why we should keep the librarians. Hello, my name is Arabella. I'm a second grader at Ringing Rocks. Library is my favorite class. I love to read books. Reading helps your brain and makes your brain grow. If you read, you can learn new words and new things. The library inspires me to write books and help other people learn. At Ringing Rocks, the students are given 20 minutes of reading. How can they do their homework if librarians aren't, the librarians aren't there to check out, to give us books? Librarians are teachers too. Please don't take away our librarians. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming out tonight and for sharing your thoughts. We appreciate it.
At this time, I'd like to, you know, give an update. It's a perfect segue from Arabella there regarding our libraries. We are, to keep the libraries open and staff for the kids, we are proposing tonight on the agenda to have a part-time library assistant, five hours a day for five days a week, that will be opposite of the full-time certified librarian. So, the days that the librarian is at Ringing Rocks, the library assistant will be at West and then vice versa. So, the libraries will be able to be open at both West and Rocks for five hours per day during the time period. So, there will be an opportunity for students to check out books, get books, do business transactions like they normally would do. And that is on the agenda tonight for approval. So, we feel confident after meeting with our administrators that this is a good way to not have any gaps in service, and that was a concern of ours all along. And we feel that this will be a good way to keep the service going when the certified librarian is not in the building. The library assistant will manage the library. Thank you.
At this time, we would like to have our student board representative, service recognition.
Thank you. Mr. Lindgren, let me just get up here. On behalf of the administration and the school board, we would like to recognize Mason McIntyre for two years of service as a student board representative. Mason will be attending Dixon College in the fall. Congratulations and thank you.
I would just like to say that I didn't know Mason before he interviewed for the position, and he seemed almost unbelievably cheerful and excited, enthusiastic about the position. And he's maintained that for two years. And that in itself is a great testimony to you. And I wish you all the very best as you go off to college and your future endeavors.
And Mason, I just want to make sure, before you leave for Dickinson, you come over and say goodbye to Ralphie. He will miss you. So will I. But, you know, Ralphie doesn't understand, so. Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to recognition of our following staff members who are heading into retirement. I would like to, I'd like, I'll call your name. I'd like to say a few words about you. And if you just stand up front, obviously, for our audience and for our board. And then I have a few gifts from the district that we'd like to present. Gary Christ, come on up, Gary. Gary started teaching biology at Potch Grove High School in 1983. When asked what he was looking forward to doing when he retires, his first response was sleeping past 5:30 a.m. Touche. He's also looking forward to traveling with his wife, Mary Allen, hiking, kayaking, biking, landscaping around the house. Congratulations, Gary.
If I can just say one thing. What will Potch Grove be without the leaf book? You're amazing. I wish you the best.
Teresa Drumheller. Terry is very excited to be moving to Jacksonville, Florida. Is Terry here tonight? Okay, we're going to read her bio in respect to her retirement and moving to Jacksonville, Florida after her retirement. She joined Potch Grove in August of 2011 as a support staff nurse. While she was, she has worked in every building. The middle school has been her primary assignment for the past several years. She has worked two jobs for the past seven years and is looking forward to relaxing and having free time. Congratulations to Teresa. Ruth Fort. Ruth was hired as a library assistant at Lower Potch Grove in September of 1985 and has held the position for almost 33 years. She is looking forward to relaxing, taking trips to the beach, sewing, and working on crafts, and spending time outdoors in gardening. She is thankful to be able to spend more time with her family and friends. Congratulations, Ruth. Gloria Fritz, I don't think Gloria's not with us tonight, but I'd like to read her bio. Gloria's been teaching Family Consumer Science at Potch Grove Middle School since August of 2005. She's looking forward to traveling in her RV with her sewing machine in tow. She enjoys choosing fabrics and sewing charity quilts for the VA Hospital and Women's Shelter in Norristown. She also plans to paint and update her house. Gloria feels fortunate to have her 93-year-old mother living in Michigan and plans to spend some time with her. And we want, we wish her all the best, Gloria. Mary Ann Harrison. Mary Ann, Mary Ann joined Potch Grove in August of 2007 as a reading specialist at West Potch Grove. She's looking forward to gardening and reading. She plans to travel with her husband, spend time helping her father-in-law, and she will be doing volunteer tutoring at her church. Congratulations, Mary Ann. Rick Pennypacker, coach. Rick has been teaching and coaching in the Potch Grove School District since 1989. He's looking forward to relaxing at the beach this fall, which he has not been able to do in 41 years due to a game called football. He will be spending time with his grandchildren and growing old with his wife and friends. And I must say that I've known Rick Pennypacker for, since 1989, so that's been 30 years. We were great rivals and most of all, I think, really, really good friends that lasted the test of time. So, it's been an honor to, Coach, to work with you over that period of time. And we're going to miss not only you, Rick, but everybody here tonight. So, congratulations and thank you. Okay, moving on with our program tonight, approval of the minutes. We're looking at 5.1, approval of the monthly board minutes for May 8th. That is our recommendation to approve those minutes of May 8, 2018.
Make a motion to approve both 5.1 and 5.2?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed say no.
I move that we accept the high school counts, middle school accounts, and cafeteria counts as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, say no.
I move that we approve the payments of invoices in the amount of $5,056,378.23 for May 2018 as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, say no.
I move that we approve the treasurer's report for May 2018 as presented and file it for audit.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions on the treasurer's report? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, say no. Okay, we have it. Unanimously again.
Moving on to the report of the superintendent. We're going to ask our student board reps to report out for the final time. Thank you.
For the high school, graduation was on June 8, and the senior walk was on Tuesday before. And the German trip is coming up at the end of the month. For the middle school and elementary schools, all schools at this point have been let out for the summer, so good luck to all the students. And I would just like to say thank you for allowing me to be a student board rep this year, and I look forward to next year.
All right. So, I just wanted to thank the school board, the administration, the senior class as a whole, for the opportunity to represent them to this school board. It was a great honor to hold this position and get feedback from my peers to report back to the school board. Thank you again. I leave this position knowing that the students are in great hands with Savannah and whoever is the next student rep. And yeah, thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mason, once again, for your service.
Can I just make a quick comment? Savannah, you mentioned graduation and the senior walk, and I can just say graduation was wonderful. I had multiple people comment to me on how nice and short it was. I was at a graduation recently that literally by the time it was done, it was too dark to take pictures. And that's a shame. And the senior walk. I mean, I know we started it two years ago, and it was a huge success. And my daughter came home from it this year, and she just said, oh, she said, "That was the most fun." She just loved it. The students loved it. So, I mean, that's definitely something we need to keep up. And it's just such a great thing, especially now that they get to see all their old teachers and they wear the name badges and stuff like that. So, it's really cool. So, just wanted to say that.
And I just wanted to touch on the senior walk, too. I have not gone to, like, I never went to any of the schools besides the high school. And it was, and I was like, at first I was like, oh, this is going to be weird. I don't know anybody there. Why am I going? But then I went to it, and it was so, it was just so cool to see how excited the kids were that we were there. It was just, it was really cool, even though I never went to any of the schools. I mean, through the board position, I have gone to the schools, but not growing up like the other kids around me did. So, I know that it definitely affected them, but it touched me too. Just the kids and the teachers and how exciting everything was for them. And yeah.
Moving on to item, discussion items number 10 for tonight, I just want to just read, you know, read for the audience. We've received a request from a taxpayer asking the district refund the penalty assessed as a result of not receiving payment at the end of October. A 2% discount is offered to taxpayer who resents the payment by the end of August. 10% penalty is assessed if delayed payment is remitted after the end of October. So, one of our, you know, one of our, you know, taxpayers in the district obviously did not make that deadline. And, you know, you've had a chance to review the material. Now's the time to discuss it. I know Mr. Nestor is here for any questions or if you'd like to add to it, but...
Well, there's a recommendation, and if the boards, the way I'd suggest you handle this, if you're inclined to follow the recommendation, certainly I don't mean to cut Dave off, he may have commented, but the way to handle it, Mr. Chairman, would be if there's no motion, it dies for lack of a motion. There's no action to be required if you're taking the administration's recommendation. Before I yield the floor to Dave, I would just say that I don't want a peer to not have any compassion for people. I mean, we've all had our travails and our woes, and, you know, it's hard to be perfect like we. We all make mistakes. But having said that, I've always been troubled by these requests because I'm not sure that you even legally can grant them. And I don't know where it would stop and end and how we'd adjudicate these. But certainly, it's appropriate for discussion unless there's no motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we do approve 10.1, the request for property tax refund.
The waiver.
No, I didn't make this suggestion.
No, I made the suggestion that we do take this into consideration and we...
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Now would be the time for discussion.
I'll make the discussion as in two. I understand the individual's issue, obviously, with not having made the payment on time. So, now he's assessed a rather large penalty, which is 10%. And I guess it's about $570 or something like that. The issue I have is, we've granted these in the past for very extenuating circumstances. Unless I'm missing something, I didn't see an extenuating circumstance except the fact that he didn't know that it was paid, wasn't paid. I don't know about anybody else, but if I don't pay my bills, service either gets shut off. I can't just go to him and say, "I forgot to pay. I thought I paid." If we grant this, then wouldn't we not, I mean, obviously, everybody would have to apply. But then you're pretty much saying to anybody that applies in the future, says, "I thought I made the payment. I didn't make the payment. I'd like to be granted the exemption as well." I don't see how you would sit there and say no to one and yes to another. So, I'm at the quandary here. Unless someone can show me that it was a very extenuating circumstance in this, like the other one where a check was here. And, I mean, that was a big ordeal with the one young lady with the check and such. So, without that, I would vote no.
I actually feel, when I read the letter and the explanation, I felt for the person because they were going under some family situations. So, I sympathize with that. It's $570. I think we look at every case as it comes by us. But my recommendation stands, I do feel it would be the right thing to do is to waive this $570.
I personally would like to know how you don't know that you still have over $5,000 left in your checking account. That I don't understand how you don't know that your check hasn't been cashed. If you, I mean, that's a lot of money. I could see if it's a $50 check and you just go, you know, you never quite balanced it or something. But that's a lot of money to still have sitting there and not question, gee, why hasn't this check been cashed yet? I could see giving it a week or two, you know, because maybe they put them in in bulk or something. But after a month, I think I would be picking up the phone and saying, you know, "Did my check get there?" Check, you know, literally, check up on your check.
I think all these situations are different. They need to be judged on the merits of each one. We can't lump them all in the same group. I do judge this as not a habitual offender. This is not a recurring theme from this person. I think we should waive this.
Mr. Nestor, do you have anything you want to add?
My only comment is, I feel this sets a very dangerous precedent. Everybody that comes and asks for this type of leniency has a reason. The dog ate my check, you know, making light of it. But everybody has an extenuating circumstance. Nobody gets the check, the bill in the mail, you know, things like that. And I think, once this door is open, it's opened on a grand scale. I don't think you can close it again. So, that's just my two cents.
As Ashley said about not being aware that $5,000, close to $6,000 was not removed from their account, and actually, it was more than a month. We're talking, based on when the letter was received and when they thought the bill was paid, we're talking six plus months that they could have done it. And I guess we can't go into any detail in the letter, but the letter is very clear that it was, you know, the person thought because of one particular reason, well, you know, somebody else's, based on somebody else's actions, has anyone reached out to find out the other person's point of view? Because it seems to me if the other one says, you know, "It's true," well, then maybe, you know, it is extenuating. If the other person says, "No," because we're only, we're only seeing one side of the story right here. That's my concern. We don't know this person. I, so, for them to say this, I would love to believe them, but unfortunately, in this day and age, we'd like to have a little bit more input from them. So, you know, can we reach out to the other side and find out if it's accurate or not? I'm not sure we're allowed to do that. But again, even so, six months is a long time to not realize that close to $6,000 has never left your account.
Well, it's six months till we're hearing about it.
No, based on the letter.
Based on the letter, okay. I don't know when he got his notices or didn't get his notices, as it says. I agree that waiving, waiving the fee would be a bad precedent. What I have seen done by other boards and other circumstances is to offer a way for them to spread out the payments. If paying now is going to create an undue financial burden on the individual, give them an opportunity to pay it back at a schedule that's agreeable to the district and to that individual. I think, in light of what I see as the circumstances of the time, that's not an unreasonable thing to suggest. Would anybody think that's a reasonable resolution?
I would have an issue with that. Are you going to allow every person to schedule their payments out that asks?
I'm talking about the, well, we're talking only and specifically about the fee.
You're talking about just the penalty?
Just the penalty. I think they've already paid the bill, haven't they?
They have paid the bill with, with the penalty.
With the penalty.
So, they're asking for a refund.
I'm sorry. I did not understand that from what I had. All right then. Does that change your motion? Okay, does it change your second? Okay. Does everybody have their position considered and everybody knows what they want to do? Could I think, ready for a vote? Okay. All those in favor of granting the waiver and refunding the money that's already been paid, say aye. Okay. All those against the motion, say no, please. No. Okay. So, I'm sorry. The motion fails.
Moving on to action items regarding the budget. We're asking the board to approve the general fund budget for the 2018-19 school year in the amount of $67,422,440 as presented.
Well, there's not actually a motion. There you go. Thank you. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions on the budget as presented?
Not a question, but I just want to say thank you for all your hard work.
Very good. All right. If there's no questions, then all those in favor of approving the budget as presented, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Yeah, can we just sort of say what, that this is zero? Is that allowed? Okay. No tax raise. Woo!
Moving on, moving on to the section 11-2, the real estate levy. We're asking the board to adopt the 18-19 real estate levy as presented.
I'd like to combine 11.2 and 11.3.
No, second, Nick.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, say no. Approved unanimously.
Okay, moving on to action items regarding personnel. 12.1 miscellaneous administrative appointment. We ask that you approve the miscellaneous administrative appointment as submitted.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions on 12.1 miscellaneous administrative personnel? If not, a motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, say no.
Congratulations.
We'd like to welcome Steve Onsbach as our new athletic director, and we're still working out the days as far as when he will officially join us. But I know he'll be spending time throughout the summer unofficially getting acclimated and transitioned. So, we welcome and await you to start fresh. Right, and we need to get him some Potch Grove gear, by the way.
Did you get your hat, your sweatshirt yet?
I called the Pots Town Honda yesterday, the Pots Town outfit. Moving on, thank you. To 12.2, any recommendations from the board? Do you want to go?
Can you combine 12.2 through to 12.11? You're making a motion to combine 12.2 with 12.11? We have a motion and a second. Does anybody have any questions or have any objection to combining those?
Yes, I would like to pull out 12.8, support staff eliminated position, and 12.9, revised job description.
You have no problem with that? We approve the change? Okay. No, actually, it wasn't. It was 12.8 and 12.9 are coming out.
Very good. Thank you. For the record.
Yes. So, other than what the motion is, does anybody have any questions about the motion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, say no. Okay, let's circle back to 12.7, 12.8.
Okay, 12.8, support staff elimination of positions. Our recommendation is to approve the elimination of the positions as submitted. That's our library assistants.
I understand. Am I allowed to talk at all? Mark, am I allowed to talk? There's no second. Am I allowed to talk?
Under Robert's rules theoretically, no, but we've never been.
I'd like the board to remind everybody in the board, we've already approved the budget, which included the removal of this position. If we don't approve this motion, then our budget is suddenly out of balance. Minutes after we passed. So, we have a motion. I need a second. We have a motion and a second. Okay, are there any questions? Will entertain any questions?
I'm allowed to talk now, besides the fact that we did recommend already and approved the budget. Obviously, not official, but I made sure of informing the community on Friday that the budget was going to be coming up on the social media and such like that. I understand that we've had a lot of individuals come in front of the board and come and email us and stuff like that in regards to keeping the library assistance. I also would like the board to take into the factor that we had over 100 people say that they were more happy to have a zero budget and should take in their comments as well, which was multitude by many, many individuals thanking the board and the administration for the job done. If I understand, we've reassigned everything, as we heard already, that the library will be open. It's not going to be affecting the students in one, one iota. The second part is that if we don't do this, I have no clue how you're going to assign the budget there. And quite frankly, I'm hoping that we're going to consider to continue with the recommendation by the administration, who's actually the ones who did the work to make sure that we are going to be on board and have the library consistent with the hours and make sure that the students were well taken care of.
Okay, consciously, this and I have agreed with the administration on a lot of things, and you know I'm a supporter. But this is the most ridiculous thing I can see that we're doing. We are taking lives away and we are going to affect our students.
Wait, what?
And I cannot do that. Yes, we, we are forcing people. We're going to get rid of our librarians. We need assistance.
No librarians.
Library assistance, which to me, they're just as important as the librarians, okay? And I've done a lot of soul searching on this, I really have. And I cannot consciously support our administration with this decision. I really cannot. It's going to affect the students. You know, we always have a surplus at the end of the year. I'm not feeling like the aides make a ton of money. They probably are worth more than we pay them, in my, and this is just my opinion. So, consciously, I think this is a wrong decision to make for Pots Grove. I think if, once we take something away, we'll never get it back. And I think there's other ways we can do it. And I think the libraries and the librarian aides and the librarians and what they do for our children is more important. It, it, just consciously, I cannot support this at all. And it's not because people came to the board. I've done a lot of soul searching on myself. I hear my granddaughter talking about going to the, to the library. She loves it. She gets to see her aide and they know what kind of books she likes. They start a relationship. And, and I, I just consciously cannot, and I would hope the board would come along with me on this. Because I, I realize we just passed the budget with a 0% increase, with a lot of hard work with the administration. But every year, we always come up with a surplus and I'm just hoping that surplus is going to come. Or I'm telling you, I know a way, we're, we're going to make it work for these aides. We are. So, that, that's my, my passion.
Patty, were you on the board when they eliminated French and the strings? So, you were, and they eliminated French at the same, at the same time. Just keep in mind that... Yes, because that was at the same time. Yeah, they, they voted them out at the same time. Keep in mind, Will Einhorn is back. You know, he, it, that lasted a year. It was a bad decision, no doubt. But it was the decision that was made at the time. And, you know, I do believe that if they find that the libraries are not functioning properly, that it will be looked at again in a year. I'm not a huge fan of it either. But, you know, we're not the only school to do it. We're one of the last schools to still have library aides. And, you know, I, I'm an avid reader. My whole family, you know, is huge on reading and I, I'm a huge believer of it. But I also believe that if things aren't running properly, we will hear about it and we will readdress it next year.
I think my biggest concern is those two positions were certified teachers' positions and these are aides. That's, that's how I look at it. And I'm just not sure that it really would be looked at, is like, we need them back. Like, I don't see why we should eliminate them anyway. I really don't.
I, I don't mean, I apologize if this comes across as some sort of chastisement, but whenever it was brought to our attention about this as an option, none of us were happy about it. And the big concern was that the students would suffer because, you know, school's not being there. And Dr. Shirk spoke with administration at all the buildings and came back and said, okay, we're going to see what can be done. And then, there was a lot of talk about the libraries not being open. But then they came forward with a plan that addressed the issue that people had, that the libraries would be closed. And it turned out that they could make it so that the libraries would remain open with, you know, with, not by bringing new people in, but by using the people that are actually already in the school, that the students already know and have already bonded with to some extent. So, I feel like we've asked them to do something and they did. And yes, it is very possible that next year, we're going to look at this and say, it really didn't turn out, you know, but this is what we asked them to do and they did it for us. And now, like I said, I apologize if it comes across as chastisement, but you mean, you agreed also that this was a great idea and now suddenly...
Actually, I haven't, because I had a meeting with Dr. Shirk about this. He was well aware of how I felt. I just was going by and listening.
You never said anything, so that's why.
Yeah, I know. But I just, I just, I've been doing a lot of soul searching and, like I said, I just cannot do it.
The success of the district depends on open communication among the relevant parties. We need to be listening to the public. We need to be listening to one another. We need to be listening to the staff. We need to be listening to the administration. And from all of those things, we take that information and we hopefully make informed decisions. We had, to the best of my knowledge, four separate occasions, we talked about this. Everybody was free to put out their, their stuff. And as you said, many of the folks were very reserved about it. They brought back into our executive sessions concerns from the public to the administration. The administration addressed those concerns. In fact, to say that we're eliminating all the positions is incorrect, because when we as a board found out that the libraries at the elementary school were closed when the, when the librarian wasn't there, we added the position that we added tonight to address that concern. So, we're trying to listen. But if we give the administration a task, 0% increase, they come back to us and say, well, we're not sure. This is what we're thinking. And we say, well, we're not sure either, but go ahead in that direction. And they come back to us and they test us several different times. And we all as a board agree, and then at the last minute, even after the budget is passed, even before, right up until the time the budget was passed, I would have been enthusiastic to hear your opinions. But here we are, budget's passed, and now we're, we're counting on hope. Hope is not a strategy, okay? Hoping it'll be enough. I think you're right. I think there will be money at the end of the year. But that's not how we budget. That having been said, one of the things that I have struggled with is giving the administration free rein. We hire them, we ask them, go out and do great things. These are the things we want you to do. And they do. So, at the last minute, in front of the folks, to tell them, no, nope, we have cold feet. And the, the other thing is, it makes the other, the other folks here look bad, because we were a unified board.
It's my opinion.
That's fine. I appreciate that. And we're going to cast a vote and everybody's opinions will be, will be shared.
That's absolutely. But I just, I consciously can't, that's all.
Fair enough.
I hope you would respect that.
I do, absolutely.
Yeah, in an earlier life, I was a supervisor. And let's look at this situation. We're not just eliminating librarians. We are eliminating people. These are not jobs that are not being filled because of attrition or replacement. These are people who are losing their jobs. In an earlier life, I had to lay off people. I'll tell you right now, it is the hardest job a supervisor has to let someone go with or without cause. And nobody's accusing anybody here of making a mistake. They did their jobs. Dave here did an enormous job just to bring the budget in. He deserved, you know, we may not like what he, you know, the elimination. Nobody here wants to let people go. But we have to follow through with a plan that apparently was started before I got on this board. And what my boss said to me when I had to lay somebody off is, don't enjoy it. If you start to enjoy laying people off, there's something wrong with you. Get out, it's time to quit. We all feel bad. I understand where you're coming from, but I can't go there. Because as a supervisor, I know that sometimes you have to look at not just the people who you're letting go, but what's good for the people who remain. The teachers, the students, who are going to be getting some redress because we heard the call that we can't close the libraries at all times. And we heard the call and we responded to that call. And I think that's the thing we have to focus on. That's what I had to think about when I had to lay somebody off. It was either to lay them off or the whole group disappeared.
We're not closing the school district.
We're not, yeah, okay. Okay, I, I... Forgive my moment of hyperbole, but, you know. Yeah, we're not going to close the school district. But I think this is something we have to think about in terms of maintaining the balance between our resources and what we want to do and what we can do. And that's all my comment.
Please. Like Chuck said, it did start, obviously, before we got on the board. But we did have multiple meetings about this and many of us voiced our concerns. And I thought we came to an agreement where we said reorganizing, everything's going to be open. So, we can't keep moving the goalposts when we ask the administration to do something. The budget has passed. I believe we might definitely regret this decision and then we can revisit it. But right now, we're already past that.
Every decision is made based on the information you have at hand at the time. And you can revisit a decision, okay? We can bring folks back. We can hire more folks. In fact, there is, there are many, many options open to us. So, at that point, I think that we're, we've just about exercised everybody's comments. Everybody knows we're going to vote. And I do thank you for your opinion. I do thank you for your statements. And I do thank you for your position, all right?
I just appreciate your step back, that's all.
You would or you do? Of course. All right. All those in favor of going forward with the administration's recommendation to eliminate the positions, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no.
No.
Okay. Very good. The vote is six to one. And the motion carries. We have one more paragraph in 12 that we have to vote on.
12, 12.9 is the revised job description for the library assistant for West Pots Grove and Rigging Rocks. The total number of hours for that position will be 25 hours per week.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments? No? If not, then all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no.
No.
Okay. Six to one. All right.
Okay, moving forward to action items for business, 13.1, Act 511. Our recommendation, we're asking you to please, I'm sorry, recommendations to approve the continuation of previously levied Act 511 taxes and a per capita tax, section 679 of the school code. If you have any questions, Dave Nester will address that.
I'd like to make a motion to combine all business items, 13.1 through 13.12.
15, 15? Does anybody have any questions or reservations about 13.1 through 13.15 inclusive? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Okay, business items passed.
Action items for education.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 14 action items, education. So, that would be 14.1 through 14.6.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the education portion of our meeting agenda, 14.1 through 14.6. Does anybody have any questions on any of those items?
Not a question, just a comment. I want to thank the curriculum committee and Dave, Daniel, of course, on the curriculum committee. I want to thank you very much for all the hard work the teachers did and everybody did on creating the science curriculum.
Okay, we had one comment. Any, any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no.
Moving on to the JOC meeting, we had a beautiful senior recognition ceremony. It's amazing to me when I had to go over there and sign the certificates of all different awards the kids got. I mean, there was, there was over like 250 certificates I had to sign. It, it's just amazing that these kids are shaken, bacon is shaken, we call it. And we had a beautiful ceremony over there. We had the first time the protective services class are branching out and they're actually doing it like a formation of the flag. So, these kids were practicing and practicing and practicing. And the senior recognition, they did a fantastic job. So, I actually was recommending, I think I was talking to Mr. D'Enzo, is when we do have color guard, if we're busy here at Pottstown, we can use the Western Center, because these kids are really doing a fantastic job. And we ended the meeting with thanking everybody. It was almost a big group hug. As you know, I said, we should all just hug. Everybody's thanking one another and it was a fantastic year. And we look forward to next year. And we do have some summer sessions coming for 5th through 8th graders. So, so, till next year.
Thank you, Mrs. Graham. Moving on to committees, 16.1, operations and facilities. We're asking the board to accept the minutes of the operations facilities as submitted.
Combine 16.1 through 16.3.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the motion or the items? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. So, we're without objection.
16.4, the policy committee. I know Mr. Parker's the chair. Would any other members of the committee like to report out on the policy committee that took place on May 22nd?
We began with some old business, policy 105, curriculum and, curriculum development. We looked at policy 105, discussed graduation requirements. And at one point through the discussion, we were going to look at foreign language. And we decided at that point, after further discussion, that we were going to take that off the table. We passed, we passed. See that? You give me the microphone, I'm, I'm voting, I'm doing all kinds of stuff. The committee decided to advance the policy 105 to 30-day review. The committee decided to advance the policy 105 to 30-day review, and just for everyone's notification, 30 days, because of this early board meeting, they won't be on the agenda until August, because we're only at about 15 days or so from that, from that meeting. We approved changes to several policies that came from recommendations from PSBA about annual changes that seem to occur every year in the procurement administrative regs, so we changed some language that allowed us to not have to address those year in and year out. We made some changes to policy 103, I'm sorry, 138, as it changed a great deal of the language around the ESSA legislation when that was approved. There were quite a few changes, so we replaced the policy 138, the previous policy, with a brand-new policy. Policy 918 also was a replacement, Title I, parent and family engagement, was replaced to replace parent involvement, all around, all centered around Title I. Because of the massive changes, again, we decided to move that forward as a complete replacement. And as I stated before, the, the discussion continued around policy 105, and it was, it was moved forward just to handle what we needed to handle concerning the phys ed requirements for our students that go to the technical center, and we no longer were interested in discussing the graduation requirements around foreign language.
Just a question, as into what was the reasoning behind the foreign language part?
The, there isn't, the requirements of different colleges and such brought up whether some did require it, some didn't require it, but actually had a discussion with our high school guidance counselors, and the concern was that they have a number of students that struggle to make it through graduation normally, and then to throw in the extra two years of a language, the fear was that some of them might say, maybe college isn't for me, and that's the last thing we want, so.
Thank you. Moving on to new business. I, I have one thing I'd like to add. I'd like to recognize, I know Mr. Dorenzo shared this with the board, but I wanted to share it publicly, that for the second year in a row at our middle school, and now, an unprecedented, five out of six years, we have earned the PI AA District One Sportsmanship Award at the middle school. So, I want to say congratulations to our, our middle school, our administration, and our coaches up there, and our athletic director up there for helping us achieve this award. Again, it's, the nice thing about these types of awards, it's, it's external, so it's people outside of, of our district looking in at us and, and recognizing, you know, the good things that we do. So, I wanted to congratulate the middle school for that, specifically Paul Exley, because, you know, he's been very instrumental in that leadership process through the years in attaining that award. So, congratulations again.
One small thing that I wanted to say, because I know we've spoken about it a million different times on our board, we'd actually said it to the public and all, I wanted to thank the, and congratulate the senior class of 2018, and I also would like to thank the administration on an amazing job done on handling the graduation, it was one of the best I've been to, so I wanted to thank you very much for that.
Specifically, Dr. Ziegler, because that's, that is, that is his show, no doubt about, so thanks, Dr. Ziegler, for your efforts.
Does anybody else have anything for new business? If not, we'd like to open the floor to the public again for any comments on any subject that you'd like to share with us. Hearing none. Motion to adjourn.
So move.
Okay.